Okay, you guys ready? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go ahead and call the legislative meeting for February 25th to order. Let the record reflect that we have all three county commissioners present and that it is 5:36 in the evening. Before we take the next step in the meeting, I would like to encourage all of you that have a phone, please turn it off. Turn it on to vibrate if you gotta take a call, and if you have to take a call, go outside and take it. Don't disrupt the rest of the folks here in the evening hearing while you're trying to have a phone call. So, please take it out in the hall or upstairs. And with that then, all those can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the next item on the agenda is the open public forum. We have folks down here that want to speak to four different items, and I think the majority of you are here to speak about an item that there is current litigation going on. And we are not, as Board, in a position to either comment on anything that you might have of concern. This issue is not coming back to the Board of County Commissioners. We are not going to rule on this regardless of which way the litigation goes. So, while I appreciate your interest in bringing your concerns down here to the Board, we don't play a role in any kind of decision-making because there is litigation that's underway. And Mr. Driscoll, would you like to expand on that in any way?
Just as the Chair says, there is pending litigation, so it's advice of council, and it's always standard advice and the rules of professional responsibility and conduct for not to have any comments on pending litigation until the matter is resolved.
So, I do know that a number of folks have signed up and yielded their time to a gentleman by the name of Bob Hislip. And I have four, three sheets yielding time to Bob, Mr. Hislip, and then I'm assuming somewhere in here I've got a sign-up sheet for Mr. Hislip himself. So, this is a public forum, and so I'm gonna let you go ahead and speak to the record, if you'd like, with regard to the issue, but just understand that this is not the forum that you want to carry your message to. So, I will give Mr. Hislip 12 minutes to make his case, and then I'm going to go to the other three items where people have wanted to provide some testimony on. And then if anybody still wants to provide testimony on the issue with regard to the Glen Rose project, then we can do that in the second forum. So, that way hopefully I can treat everybody equitably here on the issues that are coming before us tonight. So, with that, then the first individual coming up for open public forum is Mr. Hislip. Is he here in the chamber?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. My fellow Commissioner, Mr. Currents, will do the timing. When the timer goes off, then ask you to wrap up your comments and we'll move on.
There you go. I get a kind of a kick out of this because I spent the better part of today pairing my talk down so that I would meet the three minutes.[275.12][275.12](Laughter) But that's great. I appreciate the people that have given me the extra time. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Robert Hislip. I live at 6110 East Corkery Road in Glen Rose in Spokane County, and I am the President of the Glen Rose Association, representing Glen Rose community. I also would like to share with you that my family homesteaded in what is now Spokane County in 1878, and we've been here ever since. Spokane County offers great diversity for all of us to enjoy, to protect, and to give back to. That same diversity we have all come to appreciate also creates some real challenges for you folks to manage, particularly since our recent accelerated growth. Who would have ever expected that someone would put a helicopter hanger and pad in his backyard? I am here to speak about the issue that I certainly didn't expect would come up in rural Glen Rose. And I understand the point about litigation, but I, this speech does not have anything to do with litigation. The county planning department is asking for comments prior to approving a grading permit for a regional sports complex smack in the middle of our community. It comes with stadium lighting, synthetic turf, and 370 parking spots. We have known about this development since the developer had a pre-application meeting in 2017. In an effort to get out ahead of this so that the developer would not spend money and time, we have worked very diligently to convey our concerns to everyone at hand. A good gauge for how compatible that this sports complex is with the community is to interview the folks that live there. I have a petition with me, which I brought copies of, of 925 signatures from people that live or are friends of Glen Rose opposing this development. Many come with comments, and I'd invite you to read them so you have a better understanding of where people are coming from and why they are opposed to the development. So, why is this development so abhorrent to the community? There are limited ways to get out, in and out of Glen Rose. The choke points are 37th and Freya, 29th and Freya, 8th and Carnahan. And since 2013, there have been 15 major apartment developments in the area, and we're seeing the roads getting overwhelmed with traffic, particularly in the last year. I was just talking to a person today, you know, the Carnahan is not a legal arterial. There was a school bus coming down Carnahan yesterday that stopped right in the middle of Carnahan to let some kids off, and the traffic backed up clear up over the top of the hill. And that's today, we're not talking about any development that's under construction because there's a bunch of them right now that are under construction. If we add this sports complex to the mix, we're pouring fuel on the fire. Speaking of fire, people are concerned that we aren't setting ourselves up for another paradise California. What happens if Brown and Tower Mountains get torched off? Will Glen Rose Road be able to handle the evacuation? Is that such a far-fetched thing to consider? Speaking specifically about the complex, they have plans for 36 light poles, 30 to 90 feet high, with 174 light fixtures on those light poles. Are you gonna tell me that that isn't going to totally change the night sky in Glen Rose? We, today, we can see the Milky Way in Glen Rose. Is it right for somebody to come along and take that away from us? We've talked to the developers in an effort to get them to construct a true community recreation facility. They wouldn't hear it. They've been very focused on what they want to do, and we haven't been able to get the first base with them. We tried. We met with county leaders, including John Peterson, who's the head of the planning department, and we asked them to review the lighting code. The code, the code that the building and planning department uses is really quite an excellent code. I wasn't very familiar with it, but I've gotten a lot more familiar with it here in recent times. The area of lighting is, there's only about two sentences. Basically, it says that you can't shine light on somebody else's property. But who in the world would have ever dreamed that they were gonna put in a sports complex that's lit up like a Christmas tree in a rural area that is absolutely dark at night? It just, it just does not compute. To date, we have had no response from our requests, and as far as we know, the planning department has done absolutely nothing to address the lighting code. We asked Mr. Peterson to review the land use designation for this development, which we feel was made an error. He refused our request. Commissioners, what are we supposed to do? I mean, we have talked to the developer, we have met with county officials, we've made requests, and every step of the way, all that's happened is when we've been stonewalled. And I'll tell you what it makes you feel like, and what it makes you feel like is that you're just some random person living out there, and you should stay in your house and keep your door shut and keep your mouth shut. And it just, it just is not right. And I don't care about lawsuits, I don't care about any of this stuff. I'm talking about right and wrong. And dock on it, we should be represented. I am here to challenge the three of you to weigh in on the grading permit application. It's, the permit application is, there are requested comments for it, they're due by tomorrow at 4 o'clock. And after that point in time, the planning department is going to review it and make a decision about the grading permit. It's an opportunity for you also to look at it and to determine for yourselves whether or not it makes sense. If it is allowed to simply pass through, I assure you that the values of those of the Glen Rose community are vastly different regarding the direction of our county. I can also assure you that if this development is allowed to happen, you will see it again and again in other parts of the county. Is that what you want for our county? You've gotta ask yourselves, are you going to take a stand or not? I appreciate your time, and I ask you to give this subject your focused attention and the best adjustment, best judgment. I'd be happy to take any questions if you had of me.
Again, because we're in litigation, we're not in a position where we can comment or engage in a dialogue on this and stuff, so I appreciate you coming down and sharing your comments with us.
Certainly. Would you like to review the?
You can, you can leave it with the clerk there. It becomes part of the public record.
Many of them have comments, so I recommend you to read it.
Very good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.[922.06][922.06](Applause)
This, ladies and gentlemen, this is a legislative hearing. This is not a rally. If you engage in another one of those outbursts, I'll clear the chamber. Please respect the process that we have here. This is a legislative process. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Laura Rentsch, and she's also speaking on behalf of Laney Wilray. So, you have six minutes.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak for Laney. I'll be Laney first. Hi, I'm Laney Wilray, or actually, I'm Laura Rentsch. Wanted to talk about Scraps. I know we've talked about Scraps before. I'm going to read straight off the Scraps website, animal protection. Scraps enforces the Spokane County Code, the City of Spokane Municipal Code, and the Revised Code of Washington as they pertain to domestic animals. Our mission is building a more humane community, protecting public safety, and ensuring animal welfare through the compassionate, responsive, and professional enforcement of laws and public policies. Scraps is hired for animal protection and control in Spokane County, and the Commissioners work with them, as do the City of Spokane through the city council. They're funded through both entities. So, Scraps is also doing a lot with the animal shelter, which is wonderful. We don't ever want to say anything bad about that because we want to protect the animals. However, they're not doing their job on either one. Scraps is contacted for animal protection and control, Spokane Municipal Code, Chapter 5 through 16. They are here to issue citations for violations of law, including six RCW, WAC codes, and Spokane Municipal Codes. Not one person I've ever spoken to at Scraps, within Scraps, is aware of those. Not a single one. None of the managers, none of the employees, none of the animal protection officers. I've spoken at length with the Commissioners here on this matter and city council. I could spend an hour naming dog bite cases that were not followed through with, but I only have three minutes, six minutes. And also, I'm not going to name names on public record. I don't think that's right. I can do that privately, but I won't do that on public record. Scraps' own rules states that a dog bite that breaks the skin of any person, the dog will be isolated and quarantined for up to 10 days. They're not doing that. Not even when the people are being bitten with serious injuries. I can provide names and instances. These are facts, they're not just I heard. I can name so many animal protection instances where a citation should have been warranted, cases where the dogs, the victims, they're having to be retired from their duties as working dogs, or they're being retrained. Scraps doesn't follow through on their own rules. They don't, they even call the police when they're on a dangerous dog call, and they're not having the tools to deal with the job that they're hired for. The police are not animal catchers. The dogs don't have a voice. We need to be their voice. So, it's not just the shelter. The shelter is not what they're hired for. They were hired for animal control and protection. They're not succeeding in either one, so Scraps needs to decide what are they here for. You need to decide what are they here for. The funny keeps coming in. So, the dogs at the Humane Society are being evaluated and trained, they're getting some training. Scraps is not doing that. These dogs are being left in kennels until they're adopted with no training to help them with their issues. Long terms and isolation is making them worse, not better. The following dogs were highly advertised at Scraps. They were in the shelter the following times. Sukho, 280 days. Courage, 255 days. Ruby, 250 days. George, 195 days. Rusko, 190. My training club last week, we had a dog there. He was aggressive, he was very fearful, he was in a muzzle. We were very thankful he was there because my trainer's very good. I was so saddened at the end of the class when I found out that was George. George was advertised from Scraps. He does not have issues with other dogs. He did. I'm very thankful he has a home now. That dog was in isolation for 195 days. When people would go to see him, they were told, "You can't." That dog was not done any favors. These are just a few. Scraps is failing both as a shelter and as animal protection. Can they hire, be hired and funded to do one or the other and help to succeed? We need to help them succeed. Right now, we're helping them to fail, and that's not what we need to do. These dogs don't have a voice. I'm gonna jump to a little different scenario here. I don't know how much time I have left.
Minute forty.
All right, I'll talk fast. Not all disabilities are visible. If the people in this room were not wearing any glasses, you wouldn't know that you had a vision impairment. If I did not have a service dog at my side, would I appear disabled? No. My dog does more than mobility tasks. She does medical alert, she does psychiatric tasks, none of which are anybody's business. I have the dog for my, to help me with disabilities. She lessens disabilities and makes my life a lot better. I went to sensory day at the interstate fair. I was accosted by a vendor's dog there. It was very publicized in the media. I should have been protected by a RCW 9.91.170, which is Leila's Law. That's enforced by Scraps. Instead, I was mocked, humiliated, my disabilities were questioned, my dog's behavior was questioned, not only by the police, but by Scraps, also the other sensory day vendors that were there to advocate for disabled people. Leila's Law is very clear. So were the third-party, non-involved witnesses. They were clear, they were on my side. One of the other vendors there, I hate to name people, but I will, she worked for, see, I can't, I can't even think right now, it was one of the big disability advocates, so there, I won't even say it because it's not polite. That particular report that Scraps did is full of misinformation, untruths, and sloppy investigating. The police officer even wrote in there that I said I was deaf. I'm not deaf. I would never tell anybody that. All I did was go to the fair on a day made for people with sensory histories like myself. That's all I wanted to do, and that's all I was there for. My dog was accosted by a vendor's dog, so I asked for a report to be filed. A report was filed. I went into Scraps three times in person to get a copy of that. I wasn't. So, we need to be these dogs' voices. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a sign-up sheet here from Ms. Kristy Falcons, but there's no topic. Which topic did you want to speak on?
With Glen Rose.
Glen Rose, okay, thank you. So, I have a package of folks that want to speak with regard to Green Bluff. Is there anybody from the Green Bluff group that would like to start out by speaking on behalf of the group, or does everybody have a desire to have their own comment? If everybody wants to speak, I can start out, and then?
Are you going to let several people comment now? I'm just wondering.
No, no. So, I'm trying to get each one of the groups identified at the beginning, then we've got our legislative agenda, and then we'll finish up with the rest of them after the, after we get through our agenda and stuff. So, there's two public forums, and so everybody that submitted a sheet that wants to talk can talk. So, it's just a matter of trying to schedule it so that we can get as many of these items, cover it up front as we can. Some folks, if somebody else has said what you want to say, then that's great, we've heard it, and so you don't need to say it again and again. Our hearing doesn't get better after it's said two, three, four, or five times. In fact, there's even an argument that it gets worse. So, if somebody's already said what you want to say, that's great, terrific. And if somebody has said what you want to say, and you want it, you want that to be reflected in the record, we've got the slips, you can say, "My statements are," or "I agree with," and that's also another way to make your statement so that you don't have to stay here all night. So, but everybody that wants to have a say will have a say. So, okay?
We'll start out with this one, and then we'll see how we get on with that.
So, which one is coming to the microphone? Well, you can tell me when you get here.
This is Mary Ann Wilks.
Can I have some things to reject? I have some things to put up on the projector. And then, these are the copies.
Have you got it?
Okay. These are for the.
So, do I just lay it here? Or do I lay it over there?
You can put it here, or you can protect it.
How do I get it on the? So, let's flip it around. Oh, you're flipping it. Can I get it, or it won't fit? Does a piece of paper fit on it? Okay, oh, well, I say I could start, but... I can just pull it down a bit? Nope. Oh, there you go, maybe? Okay, close, probably close enough. Okay, thank you, Gina. Okay, ready? A whirlwind overview of the Green Bluff.
Give us your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am Mary Ann Wilks at 8601 East Green Bluff Road.
Thank you.
Up in Colbert. So, and I believe that Steve Cole also allocated me his three minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I have six minutes, right?
Yeah. So, repeat the question again.
I believe that Steve Cole allocated me his three minutes, so I have six minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, six minutes for Ms. Wilks. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for putting that out as well.
Okay. Whirlwind overview, which is not on your notes, but the pictures will be. Back in the spring of 2013, the Green Bluff saga began when a complaint was filed against Cannon's Edge, which was a current operating wedding venue that wasn't allowed then in small tract agriculture. From June to October of 2013, there were numerous meetings of the Planning Commission and public hearings, and October 31st, the Commission voted 6-0 denying the proposed zoning code amendment and thereby prohibiting wedding events in small tract ag. But in November, the county Commissioners, ignoring that recommendation from the Planning Commission, moved on and did their own public hearings and workshops, and in May, on the 12th, they approved wedding events in the STA with temporary use permits, TUPs. Todd Melkey and Shelley O'Quinn voting yes, and you, Al French, voting no. And then from May of 2014 to last fall, for six years, three of the five wedding and event venues on Green Bluff have been operating without permits in violation of the zoning codes. That had gone on, and we were not aware of that until there was a new application for a permit by the farmhouse on Green Bluff, the Griffiths, in the property next door to us on January 15th. Now, I want you to know we support the idea that wedding and social events are added in order to help farmers preserve their primary livelihood of agriculture. We want to see the small farms on Green Bluff continue to thrive, but we oppose what is happening at some of the current wedding and event locations where what's really essentially commercial businesses are operating in this agricultural residential zone, some with permits, some without. Cannon's Edge, the property the complaint was filed again, then it was sold in 2019, last year, and now it's called the Ridge at Green Bluff, was granted a permit with very liberal and questionable. and questionable interpretation of the zoning code. In fact, when the Eastern Washington Growth Management Hearings Board reviewed the case, after they considered the testimony of the wedding venue operator, they said, "Overall," and this is all back in the back of your packet, "this arguably indicates that the county's challenge ordinance potentially allows the wedding event business as the primary use of this property. If you would go and tour, you would see it is the primary use that continues to this day." Now, on this Green Bluff map that we have here, you can see that five of the wedding events that are currently operating are all within a mile radius. And the new one, which is a question mark there, would put number six right in the middle of all the others. So you have six venues with 200 people on a Saturday night, so we're having an additional 1,200 people within that mile radius, and over 600 vehicles on these narrow...
Two-lane roads.
...with limited water supply. And we wonder about adequate provision for fire safety. Now, back on that map, there were 37 growers listed, and 33 are providing agricultural products to the public without a wedding and event center. Three of the five event centers currently operating do also provide agricultural products. But two of the five that are currently operating, one with a permit, one without, are not part of the Green Bluff growers. Why? Because they don't offer any agricultural products to the general public. So we call on you to review the zoning codes to make sure they are written in such a way that what are essentially commercial businesses are not allowed, and ensure that only venues that are permitted are the ones that aren't actively farmed property. And also, the Growth Management Hearings Board stated that what is, and it's also listed in the Spokane County zoning code under temporary uses, that an owner of any property may submit an application for existing buildings and provided that it does not involve the erection of a substantial structure. It's pretty clear that the new structure, as you read the notes on it, being built, is designed for weddings and events. With its two ADA-approved restrooms with real flushable toilets and the prep kitchen with three compartment sink and cooler, this is designed for weddings and events. And in fact, they're now booking. I guess totally anticipating that their permit will be granted, or actually maybe knowing that because three of the five have been operating without permits, it doesn't matter. They can go ahead and book and operate. There'll be no enforcement. And they're also designing a separate bridal suite. So, and last fall, on February 7th, and I've included it in the... I sent an email. But anyway, we just would greatly desire that you would enforce the laws that are on the books and make sure that the implementation of them is in accordance with the spirit of the laws that are written.
Thank you very much. So we've completed our first half hour with regard to testimony and stuff. So we're going to go ahead and deal with the other remaining hearing items. And then we'll come back and finish up the rest of the testimony in the second round of the open public forum. So the next item is hearing item number 4A. And Mr. Coles.
Thank you, Commissioners. Chad Coles, county engineer. So this part of the hearing is on items 4A, 4B, and 4C. And we'll go through these one at a time. The first item is a traffic code revision for two bridge weight restrictions. Both of these bridges are in the North County. The first one is the Elk Chatterway Bridge, which we just did a major rehabilitation on last year. And the code changes to actually remove all weight restrictions. So it'll be able to handle normal loads. The second one is the Antler Road Bridge up in the Elk area, Elk-Collbert area. And this bridge, the change of the code, the bridge is actually restricted to 10 tons only right now under emergency weight restrictions. We went out last year and did some work on the bridge and got revised weight restrictions on that. So it is not up to full standard. But it is better than it was. It was limited to 10 tons. I'm sorry, 5 tons. Thank you, Mike. And Mike's here to answer any really technical questions. Mike Duke, our bridge engineer. Now, it's going to be changed to the proposed weight restriction is for a type 3 vehicle, 18 tons. And these types of vehicles don't really mean a lot until you see the picture. And I have a picture, if you'd like the details of it. But the next type of vehicle would go to 28 tons, which is a tractor-trailer. And then the third type goes to 36 tons. And actually, we've got four more vehicle types. I won't go through all of those for you unless you guys want those details. So that's one part of... How would you like to do this? We have five code revisions. Do you want to go through all of them and then take hearing on it? Or do you want to go through each type?
No, let's go through each one of them individually because I do have people that are signed up for 4A. But no one's signed up for any of the others. So let's just go ahead and take that separately. Okay?
Do you have any questions for me before the hearing?
This is for Mr. Coles. Okay, so I have three people signed up for testimony on 4A. First one is, well, they're not numbered, so I'm going to just take them in the order I've got them. David Graham. And John Redinger has yielded his time to Mr. Graham as well. So there's six minutes to Mr. Graham. And then the other person I have signed up is Joel Olmstead. So, Mr. Graham, if you're in the audience?
David Graham, 12724 East Antler Road. Just wanted to come down and voice our objection or problems, I guess you'd say, with this. I've got a sizable farm at the end of Antler Road. This bridge is the only way in and out. It's going to restrict my logging operations severely, my farming operations. I have hay and grain storage that's come across that bridge. Have worked with Mike a little bit, but... When I went in there, what, October or something? We'd been down to 10,000 pounds. So I guess the question is, what's the future as far as getting back to normal?
So, Mike, do you want to provide any comment on this? Or Chad?
I can comment to the program. Currently, we don't have any funds set aside. We've had discussions with the board about these types of bridges. They're short span.
Sorry about that. Don't mean to kick you out, jump in at any point. These are short-span bridges that have... We have no funding source for them. They're under 20 feet long. They're not eligible for any grant money. So we're working through that list. And we have... Mike, is it six that are in that condition?
Six on the immediate radar.
Yeah, on the immediate radar that have issues like this. We're working through those as we can get to them. And we obviously have to prioritize. The first one we have programmed, and the only one we have programmed right now is Idaho Road Bridge. So that's the short answer.
So short of creating the weight restrictions on here, the other challenge is not put weight restrictions on it. When it fails, then it's done?
That's... Well, obviously, I wouldn't recommend that. There's some safety issues associated with heavier loads, and we worry about that. Yeah, but that is the ultimate outcome.
Okay. And so up to this point, Mr. Graham has been able to use the bridge. But now there's going to be weight restrictions on it that will restrict his ability to use the bridge. Am I understanding that right?
Well, this code change actually makes them better than they were. We came in with emergency restrictions last year.
Yeah, I mean, I had to go to haul in my own fuel, 130 gallons of the whack. Couldn't even get a load of fuel in, so...
So this restriction eases that, but doesn't get it up to the full load rating?
Doesn't take it up to the full level that he's asking for, but it does improve it over what it is now? Okay.
Yeah, we are making... All the efforts that we have, they have available funds for.
Okay. All right.
I guess the question is, what does that mean as far as the future of the property? I mean, they're kind of out of business.
Well, Mr. Coles?
You know, I mean, you don't have any money. I don't have any way out of my place, so...
Well, there are some things...
I won't have any money either.
I think Mike's been talking to you about some things that you can do to temporarily... You can run light loads, which I know is impactful. You know, it costs you more money. And there's some things that you can do in terms of...
Yeah, it's two-thirds of a load. That doesn't... I mean, that doesn't make any sense at all.
I get you. The other thing we've talked about is some temporary support over the top that could help. And I don't know if you've had any ideas about that that could actually support it. That's kind of our limitations as far as that goes.
Part of the challenge is, if there's not enough money to rebuild the bridge or to improve it, then what do we do to extend the life of the bridge and stuff? So they've raised the weight limits on it to expand its usability and stuff. But, you know, is it going to be to the level that you're indicating that you need it to? Probably not. But we don't have the money to be able to raise it to the level you need it to. So where can we find a middle ground out to try and address, you know, your use of the bridge, but also the limitations financially that we're constrained by? And the other part of it, and I think Mr. Coles was trying to speak to this, is that, you know, because of the character of the bridge and stuff, it doesn't qualify for grant money that otherwise would be available to help us when we do some of the other bridge replacement projects, so...
So are all these bridges...
Commissioner Kearns?
One-way bridge? No other way out? Two of them are? Is that a priority? I don't know how you prioritize one versus the other other than the condition.
Well, if I had a different way in, I wouldn't be here talking.
I understand.
Commissioner Kearns?
Chad, how many parcels are served by this bridge? When I'm looking at the map here, it's hard to tell.
Well, and you can help me out. How many parcels are...
Well, there's three property owners. There's three of us here tonight, and the state. Multiple parcels, though.
State parks. Is that who owns the...
DNR.
DNR. So two homes beyond the bridge?
Two homes beyond the bridge. I've got 1,500 acres. John's got 80 or something. Joe's got property across the bridge. All timber. All in forest land. All the trees that are dying, as they all over the county.
Well, and so I don't know that we're going to be able to solve the problem tonight. I mean, what we're doing...
The group...
That's the group right there. The three of you are the ones that are going to find some kind of compromise. Those are the experts for the county.
And Kellogg, or Wallace, they did put a temporary bridge over. Is that something you've done?
Not... We haven't done it for commercial use. We've done it for limited access. We've done temporary bridges for conditions where people don't have access, cannot get to their homes.
So can I recommend the three of you get together and see if you can find a compromise? Okay. So, but the action that's coming for us tonight is actually going to improve the situation, not restrict it.
It should.
Yeah, so we're going to be able to increase the load on the bridge to some degree. But we're not going to be able to solve it tonight. So I encourage the three of you to get together and see if there's some other kind of solution that you might be able to pursue.
You have Mike's number, don't you?
The other person I have signed up on this thing is Joel Olmstead. I'm going to assume that your concern is the same as that of Mr. Graham's?
Yeah, I'm one of the three.
Okay.
Joe Olmstead, 11415 East Antler. A year ago, we went through and had a hearing on weights on these bridges. And at that time, when I called the road and bridge, they told me that they were looking at big, single-axle trucks and that there wouldn't be a problem taking loaded logging trucks across the bridge. Subsequent to that, there was a failure in a couple of stringers. And they went in and replaced the stringers and signed it at 10,000 pounds, which it still is. Now, I understand that they're giving out permits for 80,000 pounds now to certain individuals and the fire department and the power company. A loaded logging truck is about 106,000 pounds. And so it seems like we ought to be able to find some solution that would take and get us back to a loaded logging truck, which is what we were told was going to take and be happen. And that's my concern, that we need to find... If it's a temporary fix, it needs to have more stringers or something. This is only a 14-foot-long bridge. You can't put more than two axles on it. You can get three axles, but one's sitting on a pile cap on each end.
Right.
So we need to take and work harder to come up with a temporary solution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those are the gentlemen to make it happen.
Would you like us to address that?
Sure, go ahead. Well, if you just work with them and then come back to us with some... But the action you're asking us to take tonight on hearing item 4A actually increases the weight limit on the bridge and stuff. So it does improve the situation. It doesn't improve it enough to meet their needs, but that's something you guys can work on.
Absolutely.
All right. Good. I do not have anybody else signed up to provide testimony on 4A. So I'll ask, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on 4A? Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony. Third and final call. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the hearing on item 4A and look to my commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 4A in the matter of revising Spokane County Traffic Code number 46.44.041.
I will second the motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve 4A as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion passing unanimously. Then moving on to 4B in the matter of revising Spokane County Traffic Code number 46.61.5701. No parking Ella Road and Wall Street. Mr. Coles?
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda has to do with parking restrictions on two roadways. The first that we'll address is Ella Road out in north Spokane Valley, off of Upper River Drive. So what's before you is the yellow outlined area. Ella Road's a cul-de-sac road, dead end. It's not a great way to describe it. Beautiful area, but a cul-de-sac road. It's a narrow, I believe, 26-foot-wide road. And the folks out there came to us with a concern about parking. If parking happens on both sides, it leaves essentially 10, 12-foot lane in the middle, which won't allow for two-way traffic. We investigated it, reached out to the fire district, and they're very supportive of this action. So it's a request to limit parking from one side of the road through the yellow area.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Coles?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, do you not have anybody sign?
There's a second part to this, under the same code.
Okay.
So let me get to that. I apologize for the confusion. This is on Wall Street. This is about Wall Street and Wiley, where the new... This is about Wall Street and Wiley, where the new grade school has been built, and this request came from the school district. What they're requesting is limited parking along that area during school hours. That's their bus loading zone, school bus loading zone.
Okay.
Any questions?
Now, do we have any questions for Mr. Coles? All right, I do not have anybody signed up for this, so I'm going to ask, is there anybody who wants to provide testimony on item 4B? Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony, third and final call. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the hearing on 4B. Look to my commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 4B in the matter of revising Spokane County Traffic Code Number 46 dot 61 dot 5701. No parking on Ella Road and Wall Street as presented by staff.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion pass unanimously. Then, moving on to item 4C in the matter of revising Spokane County Traffic Code Number 46 point 61 point 2002. Stop sign revision, Multer Road. Mr. Coles?
This recommended change to the traffic code would add a stop sign on Quinamos, I believe that's Quinamos. Is it still called Quinamos on that leg?
It's Multer.
It's Multer on that leg. I apologize. This, Multer Road goes this direction, and Multer, Quinamos, goes this direction. Quinamos, Multer is a paved roadway. Multer to the west is gravel road. Our crews went out doing routine inspections of intersections, discovered a serious sight distance problem. As you come up to the intersection, the majority of the traffic runs north-south through this intersection, so we're recommending, just for safety reasons, that we put a stop sign there, just to give people that extra time to stop, think, and look.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Coles? All right. Again, I do not have anybody signed up to provide testimony, so looking for anybody in the audience like to provide testimony on 4C. Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony, third and final call. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the hearing. Look to my commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 4C in the matter of revising Spokane County Traffic Code Number 46 dot 61 dot 2002. Stop sign revision, Multer Road, as presented by staff.
I will second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion pass unanimously. Then, moving on to 4D, Lichen Delta, in the matter of the application of Sprint Communications Company LP for renewal of franchise number 07 dash 0252 to maintain a telecommunications system within county right-of-ways in Spokane County, Washington. Debra Furkins.
Hi, Debra Furkins with the Public Works Department. In the matter of the application of Sprint Communications Company LP for renewal of franchise 7 dash 0252 to maintain telecommunications systems in, over, and along and under county road right-of-ways in Spokane County. Sprint Communications has requested that the county extend the term of their current franchise by fifteen years. Sprint Communications Company LP has not requested to add small cell deployment to this current franchise. Sprint Communications' current franchise granted March 20th, 2007, will expire March 20th, 2020, unless the extension is granted. Their 2006 franchise granted fifteen years for the current franchise. Their request for an additional fifteen years is permissible under RCW 36 dot 55 dot 060. Spokane County has not received any complaints in regards to this franchise within those fifteen years. The Public Works Department recommends that Sprint's communications request for an extension be granted. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Furkins? Okay, so, again, I do not have anybody signed up, so I'll ask, is there anybody in the audience like to provide testimony on item 4D? Second call for anybody wanting to provide testimony, third and final call. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the hearing on 4D. Look for direction.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 4D in the matter of the application of the Sprint Communications Company LP for renewal of franchise number 07 dash 0252 to maintain a telecommunications system within county right-of-ways in Spokane County, Washington, as presented by staff.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion pass unanimously. Then, that completes all of the legislative items coming for the board, and then that gets us back into our second open public forum. And so, I still have a number of signup sheets for both Glen Rose and for Green Bluff. Is there, none of the signup sheets have allocated any time. Well, wait a minute. No. One person has allocated time to themselves. Probably not going to happen. All right, so, just go down the list, and, again, it'll be three minutes for everybody remaining, and we'll go until we're done through them. Again, if somebody has already said what you want to say, feel free to just come up and say, or even, you don't even have to come up, just say, "I agree with whoever provided the testimony." Again, telling us once, telling us half a dozen times, we still hear it the first time, we'll still hear it. So, just as a recommendation for you with regard to how to get through the rest of this so we finish before Wednesday. So, the next person I have signed up is Bill Schreiner.
Yeah, I'd like to yield my time to the next speaker.
Let's yield his time to the next speaker. Do you know who the next speaker is?
No. Most likely is.
No. Next speaker I have is Patricia Butterfield.
I'm Patricia Butterfield. My residence is 6011 East 32nd Avenue, Spokane 99223, in Spokane County. I speak briefly in opposition to the proposed Spokane Youth Soccer Association Sports Complex. It's my understanding, at least my interpretation from the proposal, that the data provided is, a lot of it is from 2009, and that is antiquated inappropriate data for the interval that's being considered. As one would expect, our communities have changed tremendously in the last eleven years, and I would encourage the use of contemporary data collection in the consideration of the growth patterns going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have signed up is Kristy Folkins.
I'm going to be reading a letter that is from one of our residents that wasn't able to be here. She said, "As a home," can you hear me okay? Okay. "As a homeowner in the Glen Rose neighborhood for over fifty-five years, I am very concerned about the proposed sports complex that SYSA wants to build in our community. These are the issues I am most concerned about. The proposed sports complex is not a community park, which is the only type of park allowed under the current county code. Neither myself nor any of my neighbors will be able to make use of this. This would be used for sport competitions and profit. The proposed complex will directly impact the traffic on the existing two-lane road. The volume of people and vehicles will be dangerous, especially since there are no requirements for a turn lane to be built. With limited entrances and exits, over four hundred cars are going to significantly increase traffic. Not the least of these issues is who will take the responsibility when a child walking, riding a bike, or in a car gets hurt? SYSA plans to lay down artificial turf or fields. What is the potential of chemicals seeping into the Glen Rose aquifer? All of the homes in Glen Rose are dependent on wells for water. Geographically, Glen Rose is located in a valley with intended sound system will reverberate through the valley, disrupting the quality of life for the residents, both human and animal in this area. The proposed stadium lighting will not only interfere with enjoying the night skies, but will negatively impact the inhabitant wildlife. The county just spent $350,000 to build a trailhead for people to come and hike over two hundred acres of the Dishman Hills Conservancy. This connects to a network of trails which encourage people to come observe wildlife and enjoy the peace and quiet. Our community also enjoys watching all the wildlife, which includes moose, deer, bears, coyotes, and quail that make Glen Rose their home. This complex will be detrimental to so many of the native animal populations. Please look at all these issues this sports complex will cause, not only for our community, but for all who come to enjoy a little bit of the country that is so close to our town. Sincerely, Alice Sidlow. Her address is 3910 Southeastern Road. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. So, I'm going to go back and forth so I can give both sides equal time here with regard to Green Bluff. Karen Hassan, she still here?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Some prepared letters that I can give to distribute to everybody. I need three copies. Is that good? Is everybody? Okay.
I'm Karen Hansen. I live at 8215 East Green Bluff Road. I've got, I'm sending out a couple of letters for you to look at that I've written. One was in response to what came back from the Planning Commission with regard to an application for temporary use permit in small-track ag on Green Bluff. And so, I have a letter that I responded to the planners, and I think I sent a copy to Josh Kearns, and then I have a letter that I've addressed to all three of you tonight. So, what I want to read to you is a letter that we prepared that we distributed among residents on Green Bluff, and we had about half a day to do this because we met Sunday night. And we got, I have just quickly got ten signatures from, you know, people close to me about this issue, so, but I want to read to you what the people signed on for. It says, "To Spokane County Board of County Commissioners and the Building and Planning Department, please use your influence as our elected officials to preserve Green Bluff as a unique and valuable resource for the entire Spokane area. Not only is Green Bluff soil rich and fertile, providing abundant crops, but it also provides families with wholesome outdoor entertainment and countless children with education about the effort involved in growing nutritious food. We desire that you use and enforce zoning techniques that will conserve this agricultural land and encourage the agricultural economy," and that is in RCW 36 point 70A point 177. "Seasonal harvest festivities, expanded seasonal harvest festivals and weddings were designed and added to the zoning code in order to help farmers preserve their primary livelihood of agriculture, not to bring commercial business into this agricultural residential zone. First, we ask that you review the zoning codes and enforcement thereof, they're already in place, for small-track agricultural STA to ensure that the following are not being allowed. First, alternative ways to create permanent or semi-permanent sales businesses that would otherwise require a zone reclassification to a commercial zone. Weddings, social event venues that do not support, promote, or sustain agricultural operations and production." This is taken from RCW 36 point 70A point 177. "And do not support the continuation of the overall agricultural use of the property. What we really want to do is preserve the good dirt that we have on Green Bluff." I served on the committee back about twenty years ago when the Growth Management Act was being implemented, and we were identifying, my, our task was to identify agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. Green Bluff was one of them. Good dirt, that it's based on soil samples mostly, and we have good dirt up there that we're anxious to preserve. Second, since the amendment to the zoning code which added wedding social events to STA in May 2014, as Mary Ann has already said, only two of the operating businesses with wedding venues have obtained the required permits. We call on you to enforce the code that is currently the law. We call on you to protect and preserve Spokane County's valuable agriculture resource of Green Bluff in order to avoid the irrevocable loss of this valuable and unique area and protect it for future generations." That's in Spokane Code 14 point 61, 6 point 100. And I'm going to submit letters, these letters that I was able to get around to neighbors who have signed on to this, so I would submit those at this time. I think I have about ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Claire Peterson. Claire still here? Third and final call for Claire. All right. Next person then is Jack Abel.
I'm Jack Abel. I live at 4406 East 51st Lane. It's actually in Glen Gray, which is further south of the project that we're here to talk about, and I'm here because there is so much traffic in our area. Just across the street, the county had to put red flags so that when you cross the street, you carry a red flag. You know, this project has been forced on Glen Rose. It's the tail wagging the dog, and you all should certainly know about being forced to do something since the state's trying to add two more onto your committee here. I would like to say that the Achilles heel on this project is that Spokane Youth Soccer may never even have the money to complete this project, so it could become a boondoggle like that dog park up on Government Way that never got completed, Eyesores. To show almost a thousand people to come and sign a petition not in favor of this project should be enough for you three, and I know it's in litigation and Planning Commission, but you are the powers-to-be, and this project needs to be curtailed. I was told by the person who's this project is going to be named for, since he paid off the mortgage for the property, that there's not enough baseball fields to play baseball. Well, that's not true. There's two brand-new ones up at Prairie Park, which is quite close. There's also soccer fields on Regal, on property that the city owns. I don't think the city is a bad tenant, a bad landlord, and so this is a project that is not needed, and it really needs to be shelved. I'd like to say that there's also baseball fields, soccer fields at Plant's Ferry Park, and so there's no need for this. And to shove this down the throats of the residents of Glen Rose is unfair, unwise, and unmitigated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person I have is, I believe it's Lodi Jackson.
Thank you. My name is Lodi Jackson. My residence is 7607 East Green Bluff Road. I'm here today to talk about the permits and all of the wedding activity up in Green Bluff. I actually purchased a wedding venue. I purchased Cannon's Edge, which was spoken of earlier. But years ago, two years ago, we drove up to Green Bluff. I called my husband from the phone, I said, "This is where I want to live." I grew up on an 8,000 acre ranch. I appreciate agriculture. I know how important it is to maintain agriculture in a community. So when we purchased the property, our goal was to increase the agriculture. Find a way, now we only purchased in October, so I'm working quickly, but we're trying to figure out ways we can make this an agricultural property. We are permitted. No one else, except for one other person, is permitted. And so it's frustrating because to me, when these new businesses come up and try to establish a wedding venue on its own, it ruins it for everybody else. And so I feel it's important, I need to come and say, "I want you to, I want you to come up and I want you to enforce those permits. And I need to have more agriculture on my property. Those other places that don't have agriculture and that's not their focus, then it's important that that's addressed." So I'm here today to say, "I love Green Bluff. I want to do everything I can to keep it as it is. I want to increase my agricultural presence there. I would like for people to enforce the permitting to keep it that way." Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have signed up is Larry Thorson.
Hello. My name is Larry Thorson. I live in the Glen Rose area and I think there is a little overlap here with my message, but I took the time to write it out. I would like to get through it all. So if you don't mind, I will read my statement and there are a couple of new takes maybe that people would be interested in hearing. I'm speaking in opposition to the Spokane Youth Sports Regional Sports Complex being considered for construction at 37th Avenue and Glen Rose Road in the Glen Rose community. SYSA has applied for a permit to begin construction. The Planning Department's assertion that this sports complex is a permitted use under the classification of a community recreation facility, to me, is a gross violation of the letter and spirit of the Spokane County Code. The proposed facility will be private with the residents of the community fenced out and unable to use it for recreation. To think such a complex would provide, quote, "amusement and relaxation," unquote, for community residents as described in the county code, to me, is ludicrous. This sports complex would have massive negative impacts on the quality of life in the area with upwards of 400 cars pouring out onto the narrow two-lane Glen Rose Road with poor visibility to oncoming traffic. Public safety would be seriously threatened and I don't think this can be overemphasized. The stadium lighting plan for this facility and the disruptive noise created by all the activity would eliminate future home development surrounding it. How many homes surround a Vista Stadium or the Gonzaga Playfield? There are none. Currently, Glen Rose is strictly a residential community with much of its, much of it is rural or semi-rural. Granted, housing density and traffic has increased with the addition of the Trickle Creek and Twisted Willows developments in the west area of Glen Rose. However, it has remained residential. A sports complex like the one being proposed would completely alter its residential nature and put undue pressure to totally transform it with commercial development. While surveying hundreds of homes with face-to-face visitations in the Glen Rose community, we found nearly unanimous opposition to this sports complex. The idea of an authentic community recreation facility, however, was met with overwhelming support. Some residents have discussed the possibility of purchasing the subject property from SYSA, providing them with a reasonable profit and holding the land until it could be donated to the county for future development as a community park. This would leave the option open for future residential development in the area, which would be in keeping with the current nature of the community.
Sir, I need you to wrap up your comments, your three minutes.
Okay. Such a park would be a true asset to the area and eliminate the negative impacts. And such a park would truly fit the description of a community recreation facility. Just one last paragraph. In conclusion, I would like to commend the commissioners for their support which helped create the Glen Rose Trailhead which provides citizens with a wonderful opportunity to explore and enjoy the Glen Rose area. However, allowing this regional sports complex to be inserted into the neighborhood with undue, well, undue much of the positive impact the trailhead has achieved. I thoughtfully request you confer with your planning department and deny SYSA's permit application in part because of the reasons cited here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna try the pronunciation of the last name if I butcher it, I apologize. Brad Erovic?
Can I defer, like Wade Altmeier?
So, so you want to defer your, defer your time to Mr. Wade Altmeier?
Wade, and, and my wife yielded her time, so he has six.
Sure. Okay. And I'm assuming you are Wade Altmeier?
I'm Wade Altmeier at 8701 East Green Bluff Road. And I thank you for your having a voice here. Regarding the large venue weddings on Green Bluff and the non-adherence to the RCW codes, farming has taken a hit this week. I don't know if you realize that within the political world, a farmer and a caretaker of the land I'm hired by many of the small agricultural landowners to keep their land in manageable weed-free condition, producing the crop when conditions are right. The work constitutes a little more than digging a hole and dropping in a seed. In recent years, in addition to dealing with the rain, snow, drought, equipment failures, rising fuel, and seed costs, I have a new component to contend with. Having moved to Green Bluff 20 years ago, I came to love the people and the lifestyle offered there. A small agricultural area with a strong community with family could be a part of and friends and neighbors have asked me to tend their land as they have neither the experience or equipment or desire but do not care to look at a weed patch. I farm for several of the current venues and many more who boarded these venues. In recent years, this has become a challenge. Not only do the venue owners have preference to when I can and cannot work their land because if they have, they've showed their, their property to potential wedding guests and they didn't think the hay was going to be cut at the time they had the wedding, they were a little bit pertur, angry at the outcome of their pictures, you can imagine. So, and, and people have come across the land that do not, that I'm farming on, that do not own it, from another venue and ask me to quit making dust or while they're having their wedding going on, and I've tried to be polite about these matters, but when you're farming several people's places, it's hard to accommodate everybody. And I have to usually call these places in advance to find out when their weddings are. Now, if you take, a lot of these places have several venues going every week. So I am limited to mainly four days of work and the other two I have to sit out when dealing around these venues. And so it's hard to accomplish it. When the clouds are gathering and you got hay there, you can imagine how your hands would feel tight. Not only do these, this has become a problem anyhow and to comply with all their requests. This because of prompting in many ways, thus, the people, when they see things as they saw them in October and January, when they looked at the venues, they're not the same in July, as you can imagine, and other times of the year for their pictures. Green Bluff, first of all and foremost, is a small agricultural area and other considerations must follow after the agricultural considerations according to the current CW codes. A second consideration as a farmer is the safety of the visitors to Green Bluff. If any of you visit us in the fall, you know the congested roads and many people walking along the roads. There is also a number of visitors to Green Bluff who roam off to venue sites and to the surrounding fields, forgetting that it's private land and growing crops for income. They pose a danger to themselves with equipment working in the fields and to the landowners with their drinking and potential fire danger as, as you can well imagine, it's a good time to light up and enjoy the countryside for many of them. The fields appear to be a good place for that as they lead the venue, venues. And twice over the last year, my own mailbox has been taken out twice this last year by people inebriated coming off the, the roads up there. We also had a telephone post and lines fall, the same thing happened and caught on fire the field there. Thanks to the quick response of some people, it could have been worse. All we're asking, and by the way, the rubbish flies from out of the dumpsters of these venues because they have so many people, they can't, they need to have more dumpsters or do something. It covers our fields and my cows don't like it, it could, and, and other livestock animals. It creates another potential problem that we just wanted, would like to have some consideration on. All we're asking is that you enforce the current code as it's in place. Thank you for giving us a voice and wanting to do your job as well. By enforcing this current code that's in place, I have five grandchildren, I actually have 13, but five of them live up on the bluff, my son lives there too. And I've told them why it's so important to obey rules and regulations and follow, follow them. And I don't have to, want to explain why you guys didn't maybe do the right thing here for us. It would be, it'd be a hard thing to do. So I appreciate your consideration in these matters and just abide by the rules that you put in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And I do have some signatures of other people that, around me that are influenced with this decision.
Great. Thank you, sir. Next person I have signed up is Peter Sandburn.
My name's Peter Sandburn, I live at 5106 South Gerard Lane, 99203. I live in Glen Rose, but I'm really here to ask the three of you, what is the county's role? We just heard this gentleman, that the county codes aren't being followed. I ask you why the zoning definitions that you put in place aren't being followed as well? Green Bluff is a community recreation facility. It is for use, people, for people within the area. If you look at the scale of the proposed complex with lighting, with artificial turf, with 400 parking spaces, it is well beyond the scope of a community recreation facility. You look at SYA's intentions for that complex, I call it a campus. They want to have regional and statewide tournaments. Regional people and statewide people are not from the Glen Rose area. So I ask you, not necessarily as a Glen Rose issue, but how do you uphold the definitions of your zoning? I don't know where any of you live, but what if somebody, suddenly wanted to put up a 50-story building across the street from your residence? I'm sure your zoning is residential, but what's happening in Glen Rose, what sounds like what's happening in Green Bluff, those, the definitions and those rules don't matter anymore. I don't think you'd either want, any of you would like it if suddenly the, where you live was changed because someone came in with a lot of money and wanted to make change. So I ask you that you uphold the definitions of your zoning, uphold the county codes, and protect the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Then I have Mr. Thomas Wilks.
I have six minutes, I've been given an extra three. I'll try not to do.
Yeah. Yeah. I've, I've got three from Karen Altmeier, so that gives you six minutes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for hearing our testimony tonight. It sounds like our friends at Glen Rose are starting to get like Green Bluff. It's getting pretty darn busy up there. My name's Tom Wilks, I'm at 8601 East Green Bluff Road. My wife spoke to you at the beginning about a lot of the things that certainly light our fire, so to speak. You know that good contracts and good fences, they make for good neighbors and that is what is guaranteed when we, when we had the last zone change or zone code change. And there, there were some guarantees from that that we kind of expect to be upheld. We've been living for the last 17 years directly across the street from the High Country Orchard. It's kind of a zoo. We need a traffic light at our driveway on Saturdays. But we, we almost bought the property right next door to us, but we didn't think anything would happen because it's less than 10 acres and we didn't want another zoo. But sure enough, somebody bought it, said, "Look at the opportunity that we have to start a wedding venue." So you have basically across the street, no conditional use, or no temporary use permit. They're operating and doing weddings, certainly at least in the 25 weddings a year. Just on the road is Cannon's Edge there, well, now it's the ridge at Green Bluff. We just met Lodi tonight and she's our new neighbor. And Lodi, I celebrate that you would start farming. That would be wonderful because that's really the intent of all this. And, and then we have, just down the road, another quarter mile, we have Bells on the Bluff, no temporary use permit. And they have six acres of hay that Wade farms, probably gets what he pays me, 20 bucks an acre, $120 for farming. So that's not like, even like a thousand bucks. So nobody is enforcing these codes, these ideas, these rules that were started to protect the Green Bluff community. So I want to really show you what, I'm hoping this, will this go on? By, by not really enforcing these, these codes, what's happened is we've emboldened people to just do whatever the heck they want. It's become somewhat the Wild West up there. So, can you hear me okay? Did I go in? Okay. What you see here is, I'm gonna turn it over. Okay? My house is right here. And this seven acres was a bunch of grain. And now what you see is, you see a flower shop right up the road, that's an illegal use. And they've been serving beer and coffee from that little flower shop and crowding up the road and parking all around it. And then they have, they have to have a guy in the back singing, you know, with a loudspeaker and a guitar and the same songs over and over. That happens on Saturdays and Sundays quite frequently. And they have to compete with across the street now because that's busy over there too and they like live music. So what we see here is seven acres that was farming land and what you're seeing is, is a house. This is a barn, of course. That, that barn is a wedding venue, but it came to you as a barn, it was applied for as a barn. This site plan shows all the plans for the wedding venue, it shows all this area here. That is all outdoor event space, this is all parking lot. This is all parking lot. And they have, if, if you want farming. That's their current farming. That can't amount to more than a half an acre. Okay? So you've seen seven acres now become a half an acre farming. The rest of it, by my calculation, using Scout online, I get about 4.75 acres that I don't think will ever see agriculture again. But people like this, and I, I don't blame them, they're emboldened because nobody says anything about a temporary use permit. And, uh, so you can make, right now, they're advertising on their website that they're growing mums. By the way, I don't know if this is a canned picture off the internet or what, but that's not on their property. And, uh, I can tell you that they had a bunch of potted mums this fall that they sold and they, you know, advertise it's a flower place. Um, and, uh, it's not in the spirit of what the rules are in Green Bluff. And so why would I do this when I can get 5,000 a wedding and next year 6,000, which is a going rate of, and have 25 weddings? Why would I do anything like farming? So that is essentially what I wanted to say to you. The other thing is, is on a Saturday or a Sunday morning, go out and count all the cars that are in the parking lot because they did the responsible thing and didn't drive home. I wonder how many drove off that bluff. As Mary Ann said to you before, 600 cars going off the bluff. Sit there and watch all the, all the wives driving because the guy can't. And, uh, and you wonder, well, how many people are coming off the bluff impaired when you've got six wedding venues within a mile? It's just not what it was meant to be. So anyways, we just, again, it's the same thing. Please enforce. We love our neighbors. We don't want to be, this is not Russia. We don't call the, you know, the communist government and say, "Oh, I've got to tell you about my neighbor." That's your job. That's what you contracted to do with us. And so I'd rather that you guys did the enforcement part. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So the, uh, next person I have signed up to speak is, uh, I believe it's Andy McGoran.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Andy McGoran and I live at 4909 East 50th Avenue, which is on the north side of Brown's Mountain. And our area will be the most impacted by the proposed SYSA, uh, sports complex because they're down here and we're right up here. Um, in this time that I've had, um, I've been revising like crazy. So I've, I've eliminated a lot of things which, um, Mr. Bob Hisslip spoke to you about. So I don't need to, to go into those. Traffic, light, um, et cetera, increased traffic. But I, I think that this one item that he proposed, and I assure you, um, I've only met him on one occasion and we did not confer, but, uh, I was very surprised that he hit on exactly the same, uh, argument that I had. Because we are just over the bluff from the Dishman Hills and the Chester Hills area and because in the last 50 years that we have lived in Glen Rose, there have been numerous occasions where there have been fires in the Dishman Lica area, which have been, we've been warned that we might have to, um, to evacuate. Putting the SYSA complex with 350 cars on that tiny intersection there, 37th and Glen Rose, is crazy. Uh, if a fire crowned over, uh, that area, uh, we would be forced to evacuate. And he mentioned the people of Paradise or the Napa Valley in California. I happen to have relatives in that area who did have to evacuate because there was only a minimal way out of the Napa Valley. And so they were asked to evacuate in order to get people out of there safely. You know that there are a limited number of routes off of the South Hill. Recently I had a medical appointment on the north side and it took my husband. We were in a snowstorm. It took us a half an hour in that snowstorm to get off of the South Hill down to Interstate 90. So that is a real, real concern. If you had that number, 370 cars in that small area to try to get out of there with a fire cresting over, it would be a very disastrous area. I want to cut to my last paragraph because I want to say I am not, not against the work of the Spokane U-Sports Association. My kids played soccer. They played for SYSA. My grandchildren all play soccer at different developmental levels. Our granddaughter is currently on a developmental, Olympic developmental team with her coach is Brandy Chastain, who was the woman who scored the goal in 1999 in the women's against China. Okay? Brandy, uh, has my granddaughter on her team. I am against planting a huge sports complex in the middle of wheat fields on top of an aquifer sensitive area. And I want to say no. I'm a grandma. I cheer, but we do not need to bring cars and people to this area. It is the wrong place and I urge you to not grant the grant, the grading permit to SYSA for this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person I have signed up is Penfix. Okay? Uh, next person I have then is, uh, Dr. Hugh LaFort. Wow, batting pretty good here. Next person I have then is, uh, Tom Anderson.
Yeah, my name's Tom Anderson. I live at 4619 South Spur in Spokane. And I just want to speak on a couple of points that I think Bob got to, um, but just to expand on them. One of the things we've tried to do with the Glen Rose Association is to talk with SYSA. And we talked to them about their idea about putting these stadium lighting proj, uh, fixtures up. And they basically said, "If you want to see what we're going to do, go to the Gonzaga Soccer Fields. That's the lights we're going to be putting up in Glen Rose." And we said, "Could you not do the stadium lights?" And they said, "No, we need the stadium lights because we're going to bring in the tournaments that can operate year-round and we need to be able to operate in the evening time." So we're not talking about just, you know, the morning, afternoon tournament soccer, soccer games. We're talking about nighttime events. And to call that part of a community recreation facility is a joke. That's not what we're talking about here, but that's how they're presenting it. And unfortunately, that's how the planning, planning department is supporting. One of the things that we want you to do, and Commissioner Cooney, I really appreciate that you're here today, because we expect you to advocate on our behalf. Um, and the planning department has said, "We don't need any administrative evaluation around this because this has already been decided in 2009 and 2010." That was a Little League project and it's completely different than what's being proposed here by SYSA. If you look at the Little League's plan, 2009 and 2010, and you look at the plans that SYSA have, the only entrance and exit onto this property with 370 cars that can go into a parking lot area is on Glen Rose. They're going to completely fence off 37th Avenue. That's going to be fenced. So the only in and out is on Glen Rose, right across the street from housing developments that are already in there. And that's, it's just a ridiculous kind of a concept, but the planning department is saying, "No, we don't need to, we don't need a public hearing," which is an incredible affront to us as, as citizens in that area to say, "We don't need a public hearing on this. This is a new project and that's what we need you to consider." They've also said that under SEPA, that, what is it called? The mitigated determination of nonsignificance. This was an evaluation done again in, in 2009, saying, and, and the planning department has said, "For this new project, we don't need another SEPA evaluation because it's not significant in terms of the impacts." And anybody that's lived in Glen Rose, and I've lived there since 1994, knows that the traffic study that SYSA had done said that the traffic on Glen Rose since 2014 has actually decreased. Anybody that's lived on Glen Rose knows that's ludicrous. So we are asking for a public hearing to weigh these issues and for a new traffic study. And I really appreciate the time. I know my time's up. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, sir. Uh, next one I have signed up is, uh, I think it's Davy Harris. H A R R I S. Lives on Pine Grove. Must have left. Uh, have, have you already spoken? If you've already spoken, then you can't. You have not? Sign up, uh, uh, fill out a sheet and you can speak. Yeah, right there. Running out of time, so sign quickly. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. No, just kidding. Uh, so, um, next person I have is, uh, Richard Brook. Richard here?
Feels good to get up. My legs are getting a little stiff. So. Technology, trying to get this thing to, uh, go back to vertical. Yes, good, good evening, Commissioners and Executive Dimmell and Council Driscoll. Um, my name is Richard Brook. I've, uh, resided at 4606 South Dyer Road in Glen Rose for over 25 years. And I'm here to express my strong opposition and unwavering opposition to the proposed SYSA sports complex at 37th and Glen Rose. I have been opposed to such a facility at this location since it was first proposed over 10 years ago by another group and owner at that time. Apologize. Not, uh, real swift at the technology here. Through years of study, research and assessment by many professionals in a wide range of fields, the Glen Rose community has determined years ago that this type of facility in this location is completely inappropriate. The latest proposal is also completely inappropriate. Before I go any further, I'd just like to say that, uh, I concur and agree with all the comments that have been made by all of my, uh, fellow Glen Rose residents that spoke prior. I don't want to repeat many of the issues that have been raised. Um, as I'm sure you're well aware, um, we have quite a large contingency of Glen Rose residents that have come tonight on very short notice. Um, many of those folks have had to leave because they've got, uh, family commitments and such. But I would like everybody that's here to support the opposition to the, uh, sports complex to please stand so that the Commissioners can see, uh, what I'm talking about. Thank you. So, uh, in Glen Rose, um, we, uh, as a community, we have a specific geographic footprint that's on record with Spokane County, has been for, for many, many years. And, um, within that geographic footprint, we've got about, probably about 1,300 residences at this time. And I can tell you, um, unequivocally, that the opposition to this, uh, proposed sports complex has been unanimously, um, unanimous, uh, since its first, uh, mention back in 2008. And that has not changed. It's been unwavering. So there are, um, you know, in excess of a couple thousand people that live and appreciate the rural community that we have in Glen Rose that have been, uh, absolutely, uh, opposed to this from the get-go. That has not changed. And so, uh, one thing I would like to ask you, uh, and I, I get your message. Appreciate that. So you said that, uh, you could not comment on this, uh, matter tonight because of this ongoing litigation. Would it make sense or can you comment on the, uh, concept that because there's ongoing litigation, that any decision on this pending grading permit application, uh, should be delayed until this litigation reaches its conclusion?
Yeah. We are not at liberty to comment on any part of it that relates to this project and stuff. That's, that's been advice given to us. Uh, to do so would put the county at risk and so none of us are going to, uh, put the county at risk in that way, so. But I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Well, you might consider that, Mr. Driscoll, because, uh, I think that could save people a lot of grief on both sides.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, my next speaker is, um, I believe it's Renee Peterson. Renee Peterson here? Coming to the microphone? All right.
Hi. Um, my name is Renee Peterson. Um, I live at 6004 East 32nd Avenue. I moved there in 94 and, um, it's where the Mullin Stagecoach Stop happened and, and still has, I still have a lot of what was there. And I've learned, I have just about, just under seven acres. I've learned how valuable and important our place is. It's very unique, very special. The sounds are very interesting. I can hear Chase Middle School's, um, bands and, and, um, sports, uh, they're, sports, going on. Um, so as I understand, there's really an ecosystem that is very, very delicate. It's in a bowl. It's a lot of aquifers. As I understand, the, the SYSA won't be able to have real toilets. Is, I, I, is that true? And also the infrastructure, why wouldn't infrastructure first be put there? It can't handle it. I mean, we have a, a narrow two-lane road and then down Carnahan, they're building 100, 175 as we speak and then more. I, I came to wonder who we were even dealing with? I don't know. Are, are we dealing with all of you? And who is John Peterson? And? It's like there's faceless people that are making our decisions. I, I, I'm very concerned about what's happening and what you're allowing to happen there. And I was, I, I can't believe that something that is a regional big, uh, sports thing is, is being considered at all. Is this how we do business? And, and so we just, we just have to lay down and, and, and then pretty soon it's just a big mass mess. People getting killed because of the problems with, the infrastructure can't handle it? 400 cars coming out of there? They don't even have real toilets? And the noise is going to be big and the lights are going to be big. Do you, have you guys been up there and, 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 I don't know where you live, but have you come and, and lived around there for a while or know what, what you're even dealing with?
Okay, your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. I will, I will say again, this matter is not coming back to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, so, um, I appreciate the testimony, but, uh, we don't have a role to play as this thing moves forward. So, um, last person that I have signed up, uh, new entry, no, I'm just kidding, um, is, uh, Pike Brent. Yeah, come on up.
Give it to the clerk down there. So, you know, you kind of got to follow the money on some of these things, and Airway Heights, the guy in that car spent eighteen years developing the Airway Heights facility that they're building, the seventy acres. They're competing financially with this sports center, so each one's only going to be partially done. If they were able to combine, they could probably make a better, they'd probably be able to finish all of the Airway Heights seventy acres, and have a facility that everybody wants to have out there. They want to have the lights, they want to have, they have the traffic, they're planning to build thousands and thousands of homes out there. So by following the money, you'd be better off to move it up there, and people want it there. Northern Quest, I've talked to some of the people, as I do, I do a lot of construction, so I talk to these guys all the time. Northern Quest was interested in having, you know, they wanted as many people as they can to their property. So I believe that SYSA, this isn't about whether it's right or wrong, it's just wasting their money, putting it on the edge of a mountain, where instead of being centrally located next to an airport where there's hotels, and good traffic, they're going up to the, next to the edge of a mountain, where they're only going to ever be able to get traffic from one side, and they're, I was thinking about all the routes off of South Hill, there's really no room for expansion. Havana, Freya, I don't know, Bernard, all the other streets are all basically maxed out. You might be able to do a little bit more with High Drive, and maybe Lincoln, but you're kind of maxing yourself out as far as your traffic pattern to get up there. Everybody's gone through all these, these other aspects of, like, you know, just kind of the infrastructure, and, let's see. And I think there would be a way to get out of this, if you follow the money. If you could take that card, you guys could go up, talk to the guy that's the manager of the Airway Heights facility. I bet you Glen Rose could probably swing buying that property off of this company, or the SYSA, so they wouldn't lose money. And maybe we could get the county to work with us, we could build a small community park that's not fenced off, and there'd be an exit strategy, where they don't have to look like fools for buying this property. Morning Star wants to buy the property back, they kind of, they don't want to have that, so they would actually probably buy it back. So if we could get them out of it, the numbers would work. It'd take a little doing, and then this guy, they would save their money, they'd get a whole facility, and it would work. And by the way, I'm a soccer player, I still play, and it's not just youths play sports, you know, there's plenty of adult softball teams, and I play soccer, there's probably forty or fifty adult soccer teams. And from what it sounds like it, I'd never be able to go onto this property without some sort of special youth permit, so. And I would like to have the facility close to my house, but I don't want a big facility. Keep it small, keep it local. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, I have run out of yellow slips, so I will call for anybody that has not testified, that would like to provide any testimony for the board, this is the time to do it. So first call for anybody that'd like to provide any additional testimony? You've already testified, sir.
I have no questions.
No, this isn't a debate, sir. You can speak, yes, ma'am. So you do need to fill out yellow slip, ma'am. You can fill it out after you testify. Go ahead and testify, and then you can fill it out later.
I'll be very, very fast. I've read over the SEPA that has looked at the traffic study, and I would like you to ask the Planning Commissioner to re-review the traffic study in light of the fact that the time period that was done for those counts, one of the things that I found most shocking is that as a Glen Rose resident, really, with all of the development, the traffic has decreased? Over the last five years made no sense to me, and we started investigating that. They did their traffic count the day after we had the record snowfall on March twelfth in two thousand and nineteen, they did their traffic count on March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, during Gonzaga's spring break week and March Madness. So, we would like for you to consider the fact that that traffic study may not be adequate. Please.
Thank you, ma'am. If you could go ahead and fill out the rest of the slip, we just want to make sure we keep an accurate record. So, this is the second call for anybody else that would like to provide any testimony, if you haven't provided any testimony.
I cannot, but I really wish my time to somebody else.
Okay, you need, so you need to fill out a yellow slip? Oh, you do? I didn't think I skipped one, so...
No, I yielded my time.
Okay.
I don't know if that made me already a speaker.
Yeah, it did, because you yielded your time to somebody else, and so they spoke for you.
Didn't use it all? I just have a suggestion. A suggestion on how to pay to...